Okay, we'll call to order this meeting of the Joint Conceptual Workshop with the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission. We're starting early tonight, but we have five items on our agenda and we intend to get them all in. So we'll start off with a quick call to order. Alderman McLamore is present. And Alderman Williamson, I see, okay. And Alderman Peterson, I'm calling everybody's Alderman.
I didn't know I was an Alderman. I didn't run for that.
Okay. Okay. And Alderman Brown. And Alderman Potts. And Alderman Baggett. Any other Aldermen? And Mayor Moore. Okay. So accommodations have been made to ensure that the public is able to view the meeting. The public may view the workshop in the following ways. Watch the meeting on Franklin TV or the City of Franklin website. Watch the live stream through the City of Franklin Facebook and YouTube accounts. Attend in person in the boardroom. And the public may also watch the meeting on the TV in the lobby. So the first item on our agenda tonight, item number one, is a discussion of a development plan proposing to establish the use of a group home by utilizing an existing structure on 1.11 acres located at 626 Eastview Drive. And this is called the My Friend's House PUD. And so I'll turn it over to staff.
Yeah, so a quick summary of this project. My friend's house is looking to increase their bed count from eight to 12 beds, which would reclassify them as a group home.
There is no new construction proposed with this planned unit development. The increase in beds is an internal renovation only. Group homes are not permitted in the current zoning district, which necessitated the rezoning and development plan. The development plan proposes limits to the use on the existing house. Any additions to increase in square footage would be required to go back through the rezoning and development plan process. This use has been on the site for 25 years and with no new construction proposed, staff has supported up the PUD.
Okay. So with that, does anyone, anyone on the planning commission, Alderman Peterson, do anybody have any comments on this item?
Don't they have like a... pages?
They don't have a slide presentation. They submitted their previous building permit plan just to show that that's what's there, since there's really no new construction proposed.
Is this their building they just recently dedicated?
It's the one that was recently constructed, yes.
Yeah, okay. Did they tear the other one down? I don't recall.
They did. They tore it down and built this new one.
And these are the plans from that construction?
It's pages from that plan, just sort of pertinent to the site information.
I guess I would say, I went on the neighborhood meeting and there was one person on there besides the people that are doing it, Jody Bryan and me. So, but there was some concern about, you know, having extra people and also there's not a sidewalk or anything around there. And sometimes people are out in the street even though they're supposed to stay, I guess, on the lot. I don't know whether that is or not, but maybe there would be some comments.
Anyone else have comments? Alderman, no comments?
Are they here?
Does anyone hear from the...
Steve? Come on, explain to us why you're doing what you're doing and what the rationale is.
We built it in 19... Building Permit here, inspection, CO, then it's kind of brought to our attention after the fact of the CO that we needed some, a sprinkler system, so we put that in after the CO was issued. And then it was more of a use for zoning, which we didn't really understand at the time. So we, that was March of 2020, we got the sprinkler put in, everybody, the city was happy and the state was happy. And COVID hit, so we've kind of been putting off the rezoning requests until a better time. We started probably last December, I guess, when gathering everything. But historically, we have six boys now. We're licensed up to eight under the current use, if I'm using the language correctly. And there's times we may need one respite, get a call, one kid needs to come in, stay for a month or two. And we built the building and designed it for 12, six bedrooms. And so we're just trying to clean up the, in our mind, clean up the zoning so we can accommodate what we had built.
What's the typical age of...
13 to 17.
13 to 17.
And we've been on Eastview for, we're in our 31st year.
Well, there's no question the need in our community.
And it was built to accommodate 12 to start with.
Yes, sir. So there's no new construction, no new renovation interior wise, I mean, there's no, none of that at all.
And to my knowledge, you've always been good neighbors.
We try to be, yeah.
Yeah. The only problem I found whenever you had the open house was, I think I parked over off of West Main where halfway market is now.
Yeah.
Several miles away.
We had a big day that day. A lot of people were there, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two is a discussion of a development plan proposing a mixed-use building with approximately 3,400 square feet of commercial space and 178 multifamily units on 2.68 acres located at 101 Cool Springs Boulevard, referred to as Project, the project is referred to as 101 Cool Springs Boulevard PUD. So staff presentation?
Yes, thank you. So again, in an effort to streamline this process, get right to the point, staff's going to just summarize the two major components of the plan that so far we've found does not meet Envision Franklin and zoning ordinance today. And we ask that those items be included in the discussion that you have tonight. The first item is that the height. They're proposing six stories on this project plus a pitched roof. While Envision Franklin includes this property in the six-story height map and in the regional commerce design concept, many places throughout the design concept and the guiding principles speak to respecting the view sheds of Roper's Knob and balancing intersections with form and height. This intersection includes one- and two-story buildings. The adjacent mixed-use Haven project was approved at six stories with a flat roof, and that project sits at a lower topography on Cool Springs than this project does. So staff's guidance to the applicant thus far has been that the height is too tall at this intersection and that dropping the height could provide a softer transition into Roper's Knob. The second item is architecture. This could be solved by simply meeting the zoning ordinance. And this project has only received a pre-application review, so there's plenty of opportunity to get this feedback and the building respond to this item. But the roof line of the proposed building doesn't meet the zoning ordinance requirements for mixed-use commercial buildings. Pitch roofs are not permitted on mixed-use buildings, nor does it meet the contextual design of the buildings along Cool Springs Boulevard corridor. Three other projects have recently been approved in the area with parapets rather than pitched roofs. And the pitched roof also accentuates the height of the building. The building also does not address Cool Springs Boulevard in any way. The retail component is to the rear of the site and there is no interaction along the ground floor of the building to the frontage as required by the zoning ordinance. So staff guidance in this sense is just simply meet the zoning ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions now or after the applicant has presented.
Okay. Someone here representing the applicant?
Hi, I'm Meredith Booker with 906 Studio Architects. Our design team is Campbell Design Group, Kim Lee Horn, and then our owner, Reckler Equity Partners out of New York. So thanks so much for the opportunity to present this tonight. Mitchell would like to introduce himself and who Reckler Equity is.
Hi, thank you very much for having us tonight. I'm going to do a very, a few of you have already heard a little bit about us. I will keep this quick, but my name is Mitchell Reckler. I'm co-managing partner with my cousin Greg Reckler of Reckler Equity Partners. We're a 65-year-old real estate development company based on Long Island in New York that was started by my grandfather. We're the largest owner of commercial real estate on Long Island. We have about 7 million square feet. And we hold our properties for the long term. We still own the buildings that my grandfather built 60-plus years ago. We started multifamily rental development 12 years ago when, after talking with our commercial tenants who told us about the need for high-quality rental apartments on Long Island. Currently, we have 455 units and another 1,500 units in our pipeline on Long Island. The brand is called Gray Barn and is recognized as having the highest quality multifamily projects in the region. We were looking to expand outside of our region and after a lengthy search, decided to come to Franklin. We felt like there were so many similarities to Long Island with its highly educated workforce and excellent quality of life. And with that, I will pass it back to Meredith. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to go to the next slide, it just shows a little bit about the Gray Barn project that Mitchell was describing to you and kind of the quality and character of some of the amenity spaces of some of his buildings. So next slide, please. So an overview of our site. As you can see, you know, our site is located on the intersection of Cool Springs Boulevard and Mack Hatcher along the Cool Springs corridor. Envision Franklin currently has our site in a regional commerce area with up to six stories permitted along the Cool Springs Boulevard corridor, and ours is six stories. And it states, you know, to avoid large surface parking lots, includes architecture that fits within the context of the corridor. We also have, as you'll see in further slides, our parking is totally beneath our building. The RC zoning intentions are to integrate residential into commercial and to decrease the amount of trips in the Cool Springs area. And in Franklin, the intent is to increase the density along I-65 corridor. And as you can see with the green, that shows 12 stories. And then moving along Cool Springs Boulevard to six stories, and we fall within that district. And also, people renting in Franklin typically want to work in Franklin and they, you know, invest in the local Franklin culture. Next slide, please.
The zoning info. The existing zoning is RC6, Regional Commerce 6, and our proposed zoning is to a PUD, a PD, Plan Development. Our development program does include 178 multifamily units and about 3,400 square feet of commercial. And the current zoning is intended to promote economic development through a diverse mix of high-intensity uses with the building height up to six stories. So recent approvals, this just shows our site at the corner and the proposed Haven at Cool Springs and Legends View, as well as Optima down the Cool Springs corridor. And you can see that our site is a really small footprint. It's intended to be a very high-end boutique multifamily building, and its footprint is a lot smaller. The Haven has 297 units and Optima, 348 units, and ours is a lot smaller with 178 units. And ours, you know, continues the street edge along Cool Springs Boulevard. As you can see, similar massing of the adjacent buildings. And it does include the large courtyard space along Mack Hatcher and Cool Springs. It does pull back to try to address that view shed, as you can see here on the site. Again, the program 178 multifamily units. The amenities are, you know, it has a really large, nice courtyard that I think will feel really nice at this corner with a large green space, an outdoor pool, community gardens, and some club room and fitness that open up onto the courtyard. And if we can go back two slides, we can kind of show, there's, or maybe one more slide. Well, no, I think we went back too far. Apologies, Amy. There it is. Okay. So it's going to, intended to be right in, right out here, adjacent to the site, and there's going to be a light down here. So we're proposing to put our retail space here on this corner. And we think that people will really come in here, past Legends View, past Haven, and come out here where you see our commercial space at this corner. That's really why we were locating it there. And you can go to the, let's see, oh, there we were. We were, one more. Thank you. So you can see the commercial space located at this corner. That's where I just showed you guys that you'd be coming on access with that commercial space. We have some parking that's located here, and you can also pull into the garage and the building completely parks itself underneath here. And it will be mostly concealed parking with basement level and then one level of parking And this just shows our architecture in the context of this intersection. I think this is a great image to see how it fits within the context of, you know, what's next door and the scale and massing. And the intent on this corner, you know, our owners fell in love with Franklin because they love the historic architecture of the homes, and they really wanted this building to exemplify that historic character and context with large porches, gabled roofs. And we feel like at this corner, it's a transition piece between downtown Franklin and, you know, what we have at Iron Horse, which is traditional, and then moving into the Cool Springs corridor where we have more transitional architecture. We really feel like this softens that corner and provides that transition from residential, more residential feel into the commercial corridor of Cool Springs Boulevard and vice versa, coming from more commercial into residential. And this is just exemplifying how the building fits in with the context and to its surrounding landscapes of Roper's Knob. You can see our building here next to Haven, same kind of massing. And then the height of Roper's Knob, that's much taller. Our building sits approximately 200 feet elevation lower than Roper's Knob, which is at 990, and ours is about 780. And Erin has, if we're allowed to just pass out additional, we have a one additional kind of section that just shows you guys, you can pass them out, Amy, thank you. That this handout just graphically shows our building in relation to Roper's Knob to try to address that comment as well. So as you can see, I mean, this literally shows the elevation of our building adjacent to Mack Hatcher and then the 200-foot difference approximately from the peak. I think that's good. And then this just shows more imagery of that, and you can see from this image here how it fits in with that context along Cool Springs Boulevard. And the last slide just really shows the character of the buildings to fit in with the Franklin feel. We really want this to feel truly like Franklin and not, you know, I mean, you look at it and you think, okay, this exemplifies that Franklin architecture. The large courtyard provides a great amenity for the residents. And then you can see too, at this intersection, the parking garage is really concealed under the building, which I think is a great feature, that you can't see any of the parking, and that was also part of Envision Franklin. And something else to notice, you know, along Mack Hatcher, there's only a short little portion of the building even fronting Mack Hatcher. It's pulled back. And same things with Cool Springs Boulevard, since it's kind of a shorter building, there's really not a whole lot of the building kind of fronting it, so. And also, I wanted to say that we will be providing connections to the sidewalk at the kind of right-in, right-out that I was describing, that our team is still working on, as well as pedestrian connection to the private courtyard at the corner, as well as addressing some more connections to a sidewalk along Cool Springs Boulevard. Okay. Any questions or comments for our team?
I think the one comment I would have, it has to do with kind of the view angles. And I do really appreciate you taking the time to put this in scale with Roper's Knob. But I will say about Cool Springs, it's very unique, that whole section of road, just because of what it does in topography. As you go from this intersection down into Cool Springs, it gradually slopes down and it keeps going. And so when you're looking at view angles, especially, you did show some bird's eye, I would maybe encourage you to drop those down to more of an eye level, more of a car level. And, you know, go out there, drive it yourself, and you'll kind of see where it could be a little bit more, you know, as part of the view, as when you're a little bit back on Cool Springs kind of coming up. Because that's when you're down at an angle and then kind of Roper's Knob is right up there. And so I would say, encourage you to take a look at how that would affect it from those views down at eye level. I know also Cool Springs, just that little section of road is again, really unique, and it also kind of goes to what Roper's Knob was used for, was to communicate up to, you know, Brentwood and all of that. But you can actually see the tower from Brentwood from Cool Springs. And so that's, you know, the topography is very unique. The views from Cool Springs are sometimes not what you would think they would be. So I guess that would be my concern, is that if the guidelines are not followed and we get pitched roofs and we're kind of increasing the prominence of this building in the corner, and that, you know, as you're going and driving down Cool Springs and also the adjacent buildings and the adjacent apartments around there, there's going to be some views that possibly might be affected just with this added extra height on this. I would probably be more inclined to say, you know, go with the kind of the staff recommendation that would, if it follows the guidelines, you know, of not doing the pitch roof and following that, that's my current inclination, just knowing the uniqueness of Cool Springs. But again, could you perhaps look into that? You know, does it actually compromise views with the citizens that appreciate the views every day? I guess that's my big question on this, if personally for me, if we're even going to consider it, so.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Other comments?
How close is the amenity area to going to be just Cool Springs Boulevard?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is the amenity area going to be the Cool Springs Boulevard? It looks, I'm looking at it, maybe I'm looking at it incorrectly, but it...
Oh, how close is it?
Yeah.
Well, we have quite a bit of setback, so I think, you know, it's, yeah, you can see, it's about 40 or so feet off of Cool Springs Boulevard and even farther from Mack Hatcher, just because of a lot of setbacks we have there. So it's pulled back off of the corner quite a bit.
But won't you be able to see going down the road, the activities that are going on? I mean, I'm just envisioning going down the road. I can see all of the things going on in that amenity area and I don't think the...
I said I can just envision going down the road and seeing all the activity going on in the amenities area, and it just seems like it's so close to a main roadway that it just, it doesn't make sense to me, but...
Well, I think the intent here, it's raised a little bit, it's raised about four or five feet, and then there'll be a lot of screening and things off of that. But we actually had the building designed the opposite way, where the open space was facing the back, kind of towards the golf course here. And we talked with several of the Aldermen, and they said that they thought that it would be better open here so that we were pulling it back to help preserve some of the view sheds that a lot of people were concerned with. So that's why we turned it around this way to try to keep that corner open. And the intent is to screen it pretty well, but then you don't have an imposing architectural form at the corner, I guess.
It just doesn't feel too intimate. It won't be, it'll be like you're, it's just out there in the open for everybody to just see as you go down. That's just my thinking, as I, as you go down and as people, I mean, how can it have such a good feel of being in this area? I don't know, the Alderman had a reason, but I, to me, it just, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Other comments? Alderman Brown?
Yeah, I guess first of all, I'd say, I think if I could go back in time here a little bit, obviously, a lot has come into this area in a very short amount of time here. I mean, we went from practically nothing in this area to now five, you know, five or so developments coming into one big area here. And we're wrestling with roads and infrastructure and all of that, and a lot of density right here in this area. So above all else, I guess, I would have loved to have been able to step back at some point and look at how all this stuff contextually would have really played together and to understand the implications of all of that. We are where we are. And so what I would say about, specifically about this one, I would love to know and understand the implications on traffic. I traverse this often, and I'm trying to imagine what that's going to be like trying to exit into Cool Springs Boulevard there. And in the context of all of the other traffic discussions we've been having with every other development. I think through this process, we're going to need to really understand that implication and what that looks like, because I'm having trouble understanding how there's good, how that's going to work in that, in that area. And I'll also say this, and this is something I've said before, I was one of those folks that said sort of, hey, at a minimum, maybe we rotate, just because we were originally, the original plan completely blocked view shed. But I would say even with that rotation, my feedback then and my feedback now is, you could go west to the next intersection and see something that looks very similar to what you're doing at this intersection, which is Iron Horse. I mean, it's just a big buildings right off, and Iron Horse is set back. And my concern here is, we are right at the Mack Hatcher and Cool Springs. We are, we are making that transition, and this is a very large structure popping up right on this intersection. And I will tell you, I don't walk my ward and not hear every day people commenting on Iron Horse on that intersection. And I can only imagine, and we'll see in public comment at some point, I don't think this is going to go well. I just will, I'll be honest, and Frank, as you're early in the process, I feel like I'd be transparent about that. This is a lot of mass in a very small area, right at a critical intersection coming into the area. So I don't know what your answer is, because you don't have a whole lot of lot there to work with, but it's a whole lot, it's a whole lot of building in a very small space for me, so.
Alderman Baggett?
Yeah, I agree. I think, I appreciate them turning it, I do think turning it does... Yeah, I agree, I think, I appreciate them turning it, I do think turning it does soften the corner and was important, and I think it's, I think this is some of the comments we've given to, or gave to, but earlier, but, you know, the Envision Franklin update, folks in the room, you know, take note, because this will be coming, but I think we kind of missed the boat on this corridor with Envision Franklin and the resulting zoning. I actually, with the six stories all the way, I just don't, you know, so that is what is here now and they're going to rezone, so we can take some of this into account, but the reality is, is that the only reason the Haven got approved is because it is the topography and that it went, and that a lot of those floors were on the other side of the hill. I actually don't mind the architecture, I think the spirit of the architecture, and I'm a little confused at why we wouldn't allow these kinds of roofs on multi-use, but I think architecture is softer. I think it is a good transition into the, into the Cool Springs area. And in fact, I think it's probably appropriate on the, that style of architecture would be welcomed, in my opinion, and that's just one opinion, but on this corridor because of the transition. So I unfortunately would probably disagree with staff on the architecture. However, the size and the number of stories, I do feel is quite extensive, as much as I like the idea of it and the, you know, I think it's just tall. I also think, you know, we're, commercial use here, I mean, I know it's required. Again, another one of those things we probably need to think through as we look at Envision Franklin, can you really, what commercial use here? You gotta, you can't turn left, I mean, it's just a very difficult place to get to and get out of now safely with all the development on this corner. So I think this, this area needs to be really well-planned in our, in our update, so that we can give some better guidance or set some better expectations for what, what these bodies would desire there from our, the context of our community plan, because it is a difficult intersection. And it's, it's one of those intersections that, once it's done, you know, you kind of, you lose it, you gotta get it right. But I do, I do think the architecture, in my opinion, if you're built, I wish they built the, you know, similar, took this detail of architecture to some of the other commercial buildings that I've seen, frankly, it's, it has some, as opposed to some of the other commercial structures.
Okay. Alderman Potts?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Could you provide me just a quick clarification?
Sure.
You made a comparison on the count for comparing 101 to the Haven. Can you give me that count number again?
Sure. It is 297 units in the Haven, right next door, and ours is 178.
178.
Yes.
All right. So I've got a couple of pieces right there. Along, when we're talking about the comparison now of, you know, 178 being in 101, 297 in the Haven, if we're looking at slide number five, going back, I'm looking at that and it doesn't matter what structure it is, we're just talking about 101 Cool Springs right now, is taking 178 units plus the 297 and sharing that primary entrance right there, which is again, a right turn in and a right turn out, I do have concern about the traffic load that's going to be right there. And I know some of that traffic, as you were talking about with your commercial approach, it's going to go in front of the Haven and across Legends View right there and hopefully stimulate that commercial corner that you're looking to put in. I'll be very, very frank, I'd be very interested to know what commercial might go there. I actually use the medical center that's right there, there's a pediatric dentist right there, and so I know what that area is kind of like, we're there on a regular basis. I've shared this before and I'm going to say it again, I think that on Envision Franklin, we got it wrong. We got it wrong, and I've said this before when we talked about the Haven, I've said it when we talked about the Legends, I've said it when we've talked about Optum. There is not a good transition in this area and we are creating a corridor of structures right here. And I have a lot of concern with that. I know we talked about the view shed just a couple of minutes ago, even turning this building 180 degrees as you've done, and I appreciate the extra effort architecturally that went into that, I still am concerned about the view shed component of this. Yet again, Envision Franklin is what it is right now, I've said it, again, I think we got it wrong. I do want to express my appreciation though, for the architectural renderings. I do think, as we look at this on slide, if we go up to slide eight, the renderings that are here, it does soften it a little bit. When you think about Iron Horse, Iron Horse does sit further back off of the road, but it is such a long structure, this is very compact. I would ask that, as you move this forward on slide eight and the subsequent slides, that instead of showing the Haven as just a block structure, if you've actually got those renderings, or you can go back and look at what they've submitted, to show more of a side-by-side comparison on the architecture. Because it does complement what you've done, but it really, it might paint a better picture for us from the view shed component of that, it will. Again, I have to say, even though, and I appreciate the extra supplemental document right here of showing it, Roper's Knob at 990 and 101 Cool Springs at 780, I don't think that this is an accurate representation of actually what the, and if I'm incorrect, I'd love to see an updated document. But this, this does not look like the scope of elevation change from the intersection to, it looks more dramatic from where I drive it on a regular basis. So if there is an updated version of that, it'd be great to be able to see that. So, Mr. Chair, those are the comments that I've got at this time.
Alderman Hansen, did you want, do you have any comments on this? Alderman Berger? Short comments?
Yeah, real quick, Jason, can you just, I have a question, I want a clarification before I speak, before I speak to something-
I'm watching the clock, so. Please, please proceed.
What did you mean by transition in that respect? You got it, Envision Franklin got it wrong. What did you mean by that? Could you clarify that?
Yeah, from the height of buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
And we're talking six stories here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
My only comment, well, I'm not, you know, this is all for rent again. I'm just not going there anymore. I'm done. I'm done. I think we've been saying yes, 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 we just said yes the other day. Again, I'm done. I'm just done with the, for rents, because we've been unwilling to put a cap on these rents, rentals. And I keep being told that we can't do that, if we, we put a cap on that, that also affects for sale condos. Well, something's wrong, we need to change something, if that's the truth. We need, we need to change that. So I have a problem, I have a problem with the view shed as well and the transition a bit, but you know, I don't know what transition means in this area. It's so confusing, because we have a lot of everything in this, in this area, tall, with short buildings, whatever. But I just wanted to clarify that one thing that you said, and I really do have a problem with the view shed, you know, I just, I just can't see the swimming pool up in the corner, even though it's green and everything, that's a, that corner is huge. It's busy and busy and busy and I just, I think it's out of place where it is and, you know, if you want to bring for sale product, I'd love to hear that. That's it.
Okay. And I want to, I'll make a quick comment and we'll close, Mayor, with you on this one. We've had other, I've been on this commission close to 20 years now and we've had other projects that have been proposed for this corner. It's a challenging corner, but everything else on this corner that faces toward Mack Hatcher steps down. There's much, they're much lower profile buildings. The Haven is a taller building. There's no transition here. This is a massive apartment, it's just like Iron Horse. You referred to that as a traditional kind of, it's, it's a challenge to find people that think that Iron Horse was a good choice for that corner at Franklin Road. It's, it's a mass of apartments and this is a six-story mass of apartments that I don't see having transition between. And we went through a special process back some years ago where we looked at the intersection of Mack Hatcher and Franklin Road, because it's, it's the transition, Mack Hatcher Boulevard there is, is the ring around Old Town Franklin and this is a horrendous way to, to respect the presence of Roper Knob, because it's just a, in all these buildings. Slide number eight still shows it as a, as a big mass of additional apartments right there overlooking Mack Hatcher Parkway. It's, I'm just concerned and I, from the perspective of commercial, if you've got to drive through the parking lots of the other two developments to even get there, I guess you can, your attempt may be to serve the people that live in the units, but people are not going to drive off of Cool Springs Boulevard through the parking lots of the two buildings to the east of it, to get to whatever couple of commercial stores are in that back corner of the building.
Do you have desired to put that in there if it wasn't a requirement? I mean, would you all have wanted to put commercial in there if that wasn't one of our requirements? You wouldn't have done it?
No.
Okay. You're right, but that's our code.
And the amenities area on the front corner is just an effort to try to remove that big, last big corner. It's a horrendous place to put amenities, the neighborhood swimming pools right there on the prominent front corner of that building. So there are, there are just a number of really challenging issues with this site and we always kind of, you know, the last large mass apartment complex that was proposed in there more than five or six or eight years ago, got no legs either. It was, it was a, it was a bad project for a challenging site. And so that's, that's kind of the way I look at it. I think, I think it's got strikes against it going in and it's just hard to, hard to make it look like something other than, you know, an effort to move, these last two, the Haven and the other one, I mean, we've already just approved massive new apartments for that last leg of Cool Springs Boulevard and it's just overwhelming as a, you know, a long-term, long-time resident of Franklin, it's just an overwhelming, you know, last shot at the last open lot there, so. We're against the clock and so, Mayor Moore, do you have comments you'd like to make on this one?
I like the parking lot. It's really big.
Okay.
That meant that I didn't like anything else about it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The next item, item number three tonight, is the Goose Creek Coordinated Study Update. Staff presentation, Andrew.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Bowen. Good to see you again with Rondell Ernst-Burker and Associates. So we're here to give you an update on our Goose Creek study area, just to remind you of the project team with REA is the prime, CDM Smith is our engineer and Tishlor Bice as our economic and financial consultant on this project. So tonight, I'm going to quickly, very quickly recap the October meetings, then we're going to talk about this draft third scenario, give you an update on the water sewer and conservation area and talk about the next steps. So at our community meeting that we had on October 26th, we heard from the public that they wanted to see a little bit more gradual transition between the uses that we had out there. And they wanted us to take a look at the conservation areas, especially around Pratt Lane, and see if we could revisit that. And so we have taken a look at that. They also wanted us to consider how water and sewer was coming to the area, how people working in the retail jobs were going to afford to live here, how development might affect school enrollment, and we know from talking with the schools that as this area grows out, they will need another school in this area if full build-out is achieved eventually. And then, in talking with you all, you all did have questions about the level of service at Goose Creek and the interchange and, you know, what were some of the things that we could do differently here? You all agreed at your last meeting that the flyover was not the preferred solution, so what were some of the things that we did? And we had talked about that potentially we could look at another scenario, potentially looking at different land uses and that we would meet with individual property owners, that staff would meet with individual property owners and look at the conservation area on a case-by-case basis. And so what have we been doing since we last were here? So staff has been working on a third draft scenario that focuses on the short and midterm areas. They have been reviewing the water and sewer service areas and the capacity of that. They have also been meeting with individuals to review the conservation area and have made some slight adjustments. And then we are looking at, based on this third scenario, some additional requirements for development to occur more in the short-term area. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew.
Thank you, Cynthia. Mr. Chair, how are we doing on time?
We're good.
Good. For the third scenario, we looked at the short and midterm growth areas primarily and that, those are the areas shown in this black, the hatched black line. The long-term areas, given kind of the uncertainty of the partial interchange and the, that would be south of Ramsey Solutions, we decided to just focus this third scenario on the short and midterm, it would be kind of an interim scenario that wasn't dependent on the interchange. And it also shows the areas that are more likely to request development plans and rezonings and the UGB process is still ongoing, which are taking a lot of the long-term areas. So in terms of the assumed densities, you can see the, what we had projected for the first and second scenarios and for this third one, it's around 1,800 units and about half of the non-residential square footage. The transportation costs, you've shared these before, the main difference with this third scenario being the removal of the southern overpass and connector road that would connect Carruthers Parkway to that southern overpass over I-65 and that's, that was projected to be a $50 million project, so that shows a removal of that. And the removal of the long lane overpass was also taken out of the chart since that is in the tenure CIP. But as you can see, there are still several projects that would need to be done to facilitate the build-out of this area and the estimated cost being around 125 million. Jimmy, you'll cover some of the traffic impacts.
So we modeled the traffic that was in that more condensed area where we've seen a lot of potential and a lot of interest in, in development. And what you'll see is more of the same, there'll be slight improvements to some of, to the one leg of the Patensville Road and Goose Creek bypass intersection, because there's less traffic trying to be pushed through there from, from the east, where some of that development was taken out of this scenario. What you do see is more queuing, because there's no relief valve to the south, there's no way to get really to 840 without going through this corridor. And we did a comparison to the scenario two, flyover scenario, where again, it's, it's pretty similar, just you'll see more queuing on the interstate, the southbound, or the southbound off-ramp there at I-65 and Goose Creek bypass. And really, you'll have more internal congestion at the developments in Reams Fleming Boulevard and then some of the Berry Farms access points as well. So we're still looking at some failures, you're probably saying two to three cycles at an, at an intersection, a signalized intersection. And with the road impact fees that will be generated from this, you're looking at about $20 million, based on the assumptions we made. That does not include the Reams Fleming entitlements that are already in place- That does not include the Reams Fleming entitlements that are already in place today. They still have 2.1 million square feet of non-residential and then 400 multifamily units to come online. So those impact fees were not included in this number. And in the coming months, you'll see that we'll be bringing the road impact fee model back to these groups and have more discussion about how that may change. Our consultant is currently looking at that model and how those fees may, may change over the next year, so.
Thanks, Jimmy. In terms of water and sewer, the study area is sort of at the convergence of three water utility districts. The area in blue is the Milcroftian Service Area, and that covers the bulk of the study area. The red signifies City of Franklin Water Utility District. The city serves Reams Fleming, and then that's it. And then HB and TS is in brown, and they're mostly on the other side of I-65 and 840. In terms of existing sewer, City of Franklin does provide sewer service to Reams Fleming in two different locations shown on this map. The southernmost sewer line that goes underneath I-65 is a 12-inch line, and it serves Ramsey Solutions. According to our water department, there is ample capacity there. And then the 18-inch line shown in brown, that 18-inch interceptor serves Aetna, I believe. And it, both of these exist today, and there's plenty of capacity there. And then as it goes over to the Chadwell Track to Berry Farms, the interceptor sizes increase there. I believe it's a 30-inch line. This whole study area would be served by the South Plant if and when that comes online. In terms of the future build-out of the study area, the purple lines represent future interceptors and how this basin could build out. While there are some traffic concerns, the sewer, there really aren't any sewer concerns with our water department at this time in terms of how the area could be served. It lays out very well for sewer, and this shows it. So most of the study area would be served by those two lines that go underneath I-65 into Reams Fleming. There is a small area up along Long Lane. You may be familiar with the Refuge Center and some of the issues that they're, they've encountered. That area drains a little bit differently, and it drains towards the heart of the river. We did want to touch on the conservation area. I've outlined the study area with a white border, the white dotted border. And we have a slope analysis. And the areas in red are slopes 20% or greater, and then the orange are 14 to 20%. The greens are more flat areas. The red areas are areas the city prohibits development. The city does not allow development on slopes of 20% or greater. We are actually in the process of procuring two-foot contours for the whole study area. We've been using some older five-foot contours that we got from the county. So we are updating, we will update this. We want to make sure that everything is as precise as possible. As part of our analysis on these conservation areas, we had Stephen Price in Communications fly the city drone out over the study area. So I wanted to share a few of the drone footages. And this is looking southeast on Pratt Lane, the interstate's in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. It's looking south. And I just wanted to share some of the high points. You know, I think the applicant prior to this item mentioned Roper's Knob was at 990, and you've got a high point of 1,100. So these are some pretty big hills for Williamson County. Pratt Lane, Pratt Lane has them. The low point on Pratt, or maybe not the lowest point, but I picked a point on here that's around 766. So you can just kind of see the significant rise that occurs down Pratt Lane. I did kind of stencil in, and it's not exact, but kind of the approximate conservation areas. So we've gotten some inquiries and questions and wondering why conservation is where it is. So just kind of wanted to depict that. This area in particular is looking north from Pratt Lane, and there are some property owners kind of in this circled area that have had concerns. And the high point here is 910. So it's not 1136, it's not 1,000. It's lower, and there are some slopes. There's not a lot of 20%, but there are some 20s. It's all very forested. The drone was our best shot at kind of getting in there and kind of seeing how it all lies. But we have been meeting with these property owners, and we want to continue to work to refine kind of where the conservation area, where the staff believes it should be. So we're trying to work together on that. This just shows kind of that, the area with the slope analysis in that particular area. And I did want to point out the differences between what Envision Franklin recommends in terms of the conservation design concept and what the Franklin zoning ordinance standards are. I don't know that I need to go through all of this. But the conservation area will be the forerunner for the HHO, the Hillside Protection Overlay. And then there are some additional zoning requirements related to retaining walls and tree protection and the HHO 500-foot buffer. So just because one area is not in conservation or is, there are still some zoning requirements that may relate to those properties as well, so. So the next steps in terms of the conservation areas, we've been showing a draft location for these areas. We are going to continue to refine that based on property owner input and then also kind of the updated two-foot contours that we're in the process of procuring. So we will release an updated draft of that. In terms of next steps, we'll continue to refine the conservation area, continue to get feedback, and we've put together some special considerations that will need to continue to be refined. The UGB update underpins a large part of this planning effort, and that formal process has not started. We hope that it starts early next year. And then we're also going to put forth a contract extension with the consultant for continued planning services and primarily public outreach. We feel like we need to continue to do some public outreach, probably have at least one more community meeting before we can really start to get our draft recommendations solidified. And I would like to pose a question to the group. Of course, we welcome all comments. But the city has jurisdiction over properties in the city limits that are shown in yellow on this map. So the city has annexed some properties that do not have a Envision Franklin design concept yet. Should staff go ahead and start working on designating those properties and then any associated special considerations, especially for kind of these short and midterm areas? This would be an interim step until the new UGB is adopted and more information is known about the partial interchange. That's a kind of a loaded question. I'd also like to state that we did receive an email from TDOT last week that they have met with the Federal Highway Administration about, they said there are multiple projects discussed, and one of them was this partial interchange. And that federal highway should be providing comments back, written comments back within 30 days. So hopefully, we'll have some guidance and direction at that time.
Is that to determine the potential for the federal funding for that partial?
It's really just for consideration if they would even allow it. So it's more of a, this is really the first step. If you get the head nod there, then everything else still has to be done.
All right.
I would also like to note there are kind of some grassroots efforts, some property owners and realtors that are interested in extending Pratt Lane south underneath 840. There's a road on the other side of the big hills, and it could tie into a road that already goes underneath 840. So there are some grassroots efforts. Some of you all may have, may have heard about these efforts. But right now Pratt Lane dead ends. So they're interested in extending that, which would also tie into the large amphitheater that's on the other side of 840.
Okay. All right. Comments? Anybody have comments or questions for staff?
I think the one comment I might have, and this is going from the presentation we saw and then looking at the intersections, you know, and traffic flow, is just kind of the, you know, looking at the possibilities of infrastructure around traffic and what we can and cannot do. And, you know, we'll see if we can do the 840 connection, all that. But looking at that, I'm just really wondering, you know, there's a want to kind of increase density, but at what point does that increased density just not work? You know? Because we have very low density of stuff out here right now. Could probably hold more, yeah, probably a little bit. But how much do we want to pack in there before we have a whole bunch of failing intersections with the infrastructure that we can't even add lanes to or do anything? So that's kind of my big question for the entire development of this, this whole area is, it's, you know, nice land, but what can be done with it without breaking things?
Yeah, I mean, if you want a response, that's really the question we're asking ourselves and Plan Commission to Board is what is the breaking point from a traffic standpoint? Then as you see, we ran the third scenario. We could run as many scenarios at this point as we want, and you're going to see failure because the existing entitlements already give us that. It's just how far does that go beyond the failure, which everyone has a different opinion on what, yeah, what their, what their level of service is for a level of service, I should say. So that's the question. We really need a lot of guidance on.
Can you give an update on the UGB adoption as far as what?
Alma.
Can you give an update on the UGB process and what's going on with that as far as, you know, there's been some discussion as far as relinquishing some of the properties and converting them back or whatever. Can anybody give an update on that? Because that was a way that we talked about decreasing density in the city and giving some of the properties back to the county where the, where it would continue.
Summarize it better.
All right. So that process is still moving forward. They have not formally convened it yet. There've been some informal meetings. The City of Franklin has pretty well defined what we think those adjustments ought to be, and in this area, it matches with the drainage basin areas. There's some additional areas more into the southwest that we are taking out because they're very difficult to serve. But for the most part, the city has identified its adjustments. There are some other modifications going on in some other communities that I think are a little more significant that relate to one another to the south. I think that's still kind of being worked out in terms of the concept to go into the formal process. But I think we would look for this process to pick up momentum again in the new year and really start, I would expect it sometime next year to formally convene, which sets in motion a timeframe within which those decisions have to be made. So that's the best overview I can give you. There's not a lot of controversy or uncertainty around where Franklin's going. There are a couple unresolved issues elsewhere in the county that I think are being worked through. But I think the process is pretty, pretty close to being ready to start when we get into the new year.
So bottom line, we know where, what we want and where we want to retain.
Yeah, I think we've defined that pretty well. We've gone back to the board a couple times and had some dialogue. We've gotten some feedback on specific properties and made some adjustments based on both that and our ability to serve or not serve certain properties with also an eye towards how do we maintain the most flexibility going on in the future in terms of where there's potential development opportunity and where our, where it does make sense for infrastructure to potentially be extended.
And once that's established, will people still be able to say that they'd like to be annexed into the city even if it's outside of the UGB?
Yeah, that property owner right still exists. We're trying to capture some of what has naturally happened in this process over the last three years or so in terms of folks, especially in the southeast, that are in that drainage basin that have the ability to be served, especially by sanitary sewer, bringing that area into our UGB. Into the redefined UGB. But yeah, that right still exists. Even when you set those lines, you may still have requests, and that will work through the process we've seen the last three or four years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for going back and doing another iteration. It's tough when you're starting from a failing position on Goose Creek to find another way to, you know, you can throw more at it and it still fails. And it's kind of ironic as, you know, being new on the board, seeing these kinds of issues and how sometimes you can solve current problems with new development, sometimes you can't. And I think we've done a great job with figuring out how to solve problems that we've had with new development. And, but then, you know, I think we're giving this a great, a great try to figure it out, but it just continues to feel like we're not really solving anything. I'm struggling to figure out what we're solving with this. And that doesn't mean that there along the interstate that's in the city limits and that there's not some, there's room for commercial and density, there's already some over here. And I think finishing out kind of what's at the interstate and trying to solve the problems that exist on Goose Creek is probably smart. But I don't, I just continue to struggle to figure, to understand how we are going to solve the traffic issue. And as much as I would like for a road under 840 to solve it, I don't think it will. I mean, I don't think one road going south is going to solve the failures. Would it help? It probably would help, but it would, it's not going to solve it. And someone told me once that, here recently, and we've got five lanes going out 96 to Murray County. We've got infrastructure that already exists, and we start looking, and sewer's hard to get there. But it's a whole heck of a lot cheaper than the numbers I'm seeing here to get to east of town, where the state has already paid for it, for the traffic infrastructure. But it's five lanes. And I respect the property owner rights who find themselves outside of the city limits at the moment. You know, I want to, I have desires for my property that I'm limited by because of certain ordinances. You know, it's just kind of, kind of the way it works. You know, and if someone, you know, I think it would be wise for us to think about, because this annexation law, you know, we've got everything estate residential down there now. No problem leaving it in the UGB. And I'm talking outside of that commercial core of Goose Creek. I mean, I think there and around, there's an opportunity there to continue the commercial core there at the, at and in close by the intersection. But as you look at adding more rooftops, I just don't know how it's going to work, but leaving that estate residential if they want to annex in. And that will keep some, some of that, you know, gives people an opportunity if they want to develop a state residential, they can on down Patensville Road. It's as close as we're going to get to one per five in the city. And then looking at really where we can, where the infrastructure exists already that will not be, is not currently failing. 96 is five lanes, and there's, there's developable property west, or east, excuse me. I'm not trying to, listen, I mean, I think there's something here, and it needs to be in the UGB, and we need to think about. But I also want to say that Alderman Hansen has brought up some ideas and others of these tax districts. I'm not saying that's off the table, but we don't have those tools at the moment. And so I think it would be kind of unwise, in my opinion, staff, that we would, we would plan for something that we know is probably not going to work from a traffic standpoint until maybe we have some of those other tools. And then I think it's back on the table. And then I think we can really do this right, and it's, the financial impact of the city is not as drastic to the other, to the rest of the citizens. I know that's not what the property owners want to hear, but... I know that's not what the property owners want to hear, but at, at the moment, I'm elected by, you know, the 20,000 in Ward Four. And I think that that would be the fiscally responsible at the moment. But I would like for this to, to begin thinking about what is east of town, follow the infrastructure that exists.
Okay. Alderman Potts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask staff if you could help on slide 21. You had made reference to the white dotted line. Is there a reason why the dotted line is open in the top left-hand corner on the slide?
The study area largely did not include like the ag center and those properties right in and around it.
Okay. So if we, if we were zoomed in on that, that's, that's the ag center right there and what would be in that open area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Yeah, if we, if we jump down to slide 26 and 27, I, I do want to compliment staff right here because this is something I feel like I'm sensitive to, and I'm always going to be sensitive to it, and that is our hillside protective overlay. And so I'm glad to see that we're looking at this. You said that you're going to take the drone out, get even better measurements than what you've already got right now. I think that's additionally important. This is, this is one of our, our greatest treasures is all of our hillsides. So anything that we can do to protect these hillsides. We just had a conversation when we were talking about 101 Cool Springs Boulevard, which was item number two on our agenda, and trying to protect our hillside overlay. So I want to make sure that we continue to invest as much time, energy, effort, and as we move into, to protect it as well as make improvements to Envision Franklin moving forward. The, if, if I might, I'm trying to follow your, your presentation, but I do have a question for staff, and see if you could help me with this part, is if we move back up to slide number 13 and 14 right here, and that is, could you just remind us, when we're talking about an intersection failure, what that definition is?
Sure. I don't have it right in front of me, but our, our guidelines really at about the 80-second mark for you to get through an intersection is considered a level of service F. So anything better than that is increments of like 10 to 15 seconds, get better and better. And we don't have any classification for anything past that. So all of these in red are at that point.
At 80 second, what do you believe will be 80 seconds or higher?
Correct. And, but it's really much, much more than that, because when you look at slide 14, which is the next slide, that shows, that's really a better picture for you because that shows the queuing lengths for stacked-in-traffic cars at those PM and AM peak periods, so the morning commute and the evening commute. So that's probably a better way to understand the failure because we've run out of letters in our alphabet, so to speak, and we're just looking at seconds of delay and length of traffic queuing at an intersection.
Okay. And so just again, trying to help provide definitions for those either here in the room or that are watching online, when we're talking AM and PM peak, talking to, you know, when we talk, if, if I will, say Atlanta traffic and their peak hour is 24 hours a day.
Right.
So when we'd say peak right now, based on what you're showing on slide 14, or going back to 13, is that a seven to nine window? What, what is that AM, PM peak?
Well, it's, it's funny during, during the pandemic, it actually shifted on us quite a bit. When traffic started picking up, it was, people seemed to work from home, and then it hit about 9:30 in the morning. But it's generally speaking, we're back to normal now, and it's that 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, and then 4:30 to 5:30 is generally would, you know, varies a little bit, but that's generally what we look at.
So part of why I'm asking the question is, as someone who lives on 96, right there, Mack Hatcher 96, going, when I, when I leave the Maplewood subdivision and I go eastbound towards the interstate and the number of lights that I'm having to get through right now, I'm thinking about how many of those lights are failure now, because I've never timed it. And so I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, gosh, I hate to say worse or better bad as one of, one of our previous people that was here. But, but I'm really looking at having, and you, you may have touched on this, if you said we don't have enough letters in the alphabet right now, failure right now, I, I'm, I'm sitting there through two and three lights at a time right now on lights that are failing. And so I, I'm also thinking about, you're saying it's going to fail here at 80 seconds or greater. I, I don't know if there is a traffic study expansion on that to help us to really understand, are we at a failure one or failure five type of approach?
Right.
And I'm asking that question as well because I'm looking at our existing failures. I'm looking at, you know, Cool Springs and Mallory. I'm looking at 96 and, and Royal Oaks. You know, I, you know, how bad is the failure rate on these traffic lights really going to be? Where you're looking, given a scenario that takes us out to 2050, good lord, I'm scared to death right now on what it's going to look like in our existing intersections. So that, that, if, if that is a tool that can be shared, I don't know. I'm coming to you.
Of course.
And asking that question.
We can, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we can provide the seconds of delay, which will help. And generally speaking, in this corridor, you're looking at the two to three, it's very comparable to 96 at the interchange of I-65. And there are other communities, more densely populated communities, that take it a step further and go level of service F, 1, 2, 3, 4, kind of like a measuring a tornado, that look at things like that, which we, we don't have that in our standards right now, when we may need to start thinking about that. But we, we really look at seconds of delay, and we, two to three cycles at an intersection is a lot for most drivers in, in Franklin, probably not in places like Atlanta. They've just gotten used to it over time. But obviously, that's not what we're trying to become either, so.
Right. Exactly. And we don't want to do that. But I, I do like your idea, or if the existing tool is there, of being able to provide that because I think the public is also asking that question. Those that are living in this area, when they just see the word failure or excessive queuing, it's not giving them 80 seconds to them, you know, where nobody's used to sitting there with stopwatch, sitting at a stoplight, trying to figure that out. So if we could, and again, I know that we have a great traffic center and how they're doing the lights, but if you can give us an idea of how long, how many lights you're actually sitting there at, I think that could be helpful.
I'll get with our traffic engineer and try to get that information pushed out.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
We're going to, we're going to start dropping off.
Yeah. This is Ward Three, and I'm just focused on it, and I want to make sure we get all the citizen questions out.
I wish we had an hour to talk about this, but we don't. We're out of, we're, I'm, I'm looking at our, because a number of us have not had a chance yet to indicate.
And I apologize, but as the person elected to represent this area, I, I have even more questions, but I will yield my time.
Other comments or questions? Alderman Hansen, Alderman Berger, and Steph, Scott, please.
I see an delay, and I apologize for starting your presentation. But my question is, the traffic study that you show seems to show on existing traffic situations. Does it take in consideration the new flyover? And does it take in consideration the extension of Carruthers further down? Does it, does it include the, the new interchange that's opening, what, next year at Spring Hill? Will it alleviate traffic in this area?
Right. This scenario three did not include the flyover or the interchange. This was a more condensed area closer to Peyton's Road and existing Carruthers now, and it did not include Carruthers extending all the way over Lewisburg or over I-65.
It does include the long line overpass.
It does include.
Yeah, long line overpass.
I think that along with the new Spring Hill interchange that we're getting south of us is going to alleviate a lot of traffic in that area.
Our study area didn't extend that far down because obviously it's outside of our jurisdiction. So we really focused in the area that we can control and plan for.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I think Andrew asked a question that nobody's answered. So, I mean, if there's no reason not to go ahead and create an Envision Franklin amendment for the properties we've already annexed, you know, probably there are property owners that would be interested in doing that process. I mean, is there a downside? I mean, you asked the question. My question back is, is there a downside to going ahead and starting to imagine that?
There aren't that many parcels that are undesignated. Again, there's just, there's been uncertainty. We're starting to know more information, and it's just been one of those kind of iterative processes. You know, I, I, there's, there is demand in this area, and I will say the property owners, you know, have a certain opinion and would like to see things continue to move forward. There's development pressure, so we, we would like to continue trying to move this forward.
It was pretty painful for us to, to slow this down so that we could do this area study, so maybe it is a good idea to go ahead and maybe start looking at something.
Recommending the, on page 10, those, like I see conservation subdivision, and are those the uses that you would be looking at for, I'm on page 10, updates, third scenario? Nope, that was it.
I wrote 11.
Yep, one more, back. No, back. That one. There at the bottom, it has the different character. Is that what would be fueling in Envision Franklin, or is that kind of a preview?
Am I on the correct slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I think there's, so there's sort of two questions that we had, and I didn't ask this one, but for the short-term areas, you know, is there a comfort level to start taking in rezoning applications for properties that have already been designated? So you've got those properties that are already designated, and then like on this slide, you know, really, my question was geared towards the exhibit that's on page 30 that shows the, and maybe it was hard to show up, but it's the properties that are outlined in yellow that are kind of beyond where the colors are.
If you need an answer, I suggest you go forward with it.
Okay. But yeah, I mean, there's sort of two questions. I, I only put the one on here, but, you know, what is the board's comfort level at? We're still grappling with the traffic at the PM and the AM peaks. And one strategy is to look for uses that are maybe not so burdensome at those AM and peak hours. Office uses are going to, they're going to exacerbate that issue at the AM and PM, so maybe find some non-office uses, find other uses that are complementary. There have been inquiries about assisted living-type facilities that would lessen that traffic burden, so there could be some, some solutions, but.
Because we've said that, that we're okay, we can accommodate the water and wastewater needs of these areas at this time.
The wastewater, the city would provide, the sewer service, the Millcroft and Utility District, there's an issue with how much water, the lines would have to be upsized, and then a new tank would also be needed. But those are issues that seem to be, could get worked out and overcome.
Okay. Okay. There's, there's so much to consider that, I appreciate the effort, Cynthia and staff. So. Our next item is for a, an Envision Franklin update overview, and Andrew's going to introduce this. It was our intent, it's still our intent, to get feedback from, from Plan Commission members and members of the Board of Mayor and Alderman. And we need feedback from everybody, and we're going to be challenged with our time here. So, so I encourage you as you, as you give feedback and make comments and ask questions that, that maybe we hold some of the discussion to a little, little shorter timeframe, because we, we don't have the time to, to discuss at extensive length.
Before we move forward, did we give Andrew the, the answer to the question he needed about moving forward with the plan?
Yeah. I suggest you go forward.
I didn't hear. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. So you did tell him when you came. I didn't hear that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, staff, okay, I'll, Cynthia, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will also try to make this presentation very brief on the Envision Franklin. Good evening again. My name is Cynthia Bowen with Rundell, Ernst, Berger &amp; Associates, and we've been hired, again, to update your Envision Franklin process, or Envision Franklin plan. And if you remember, we updated or prepared it back in 2015. So I want to introduce our team here. So I will be the project manager and overseeing the project. With me, three of us are up here at the table. This is Daniel Liggett with me, who will be looking, he was an urban planner, urban designer. This is Deborah Meyerson with Meyerson Consulting. She is our housing expert and will be looking at the housing analysis and preparing a report on that. And then back in the back here is Rachel Kardas, who is a senior planner with Rundell, Ernst, Berger &amp; Associates, and she, this will be your core team that you will see preparing this plan. We will also have a support team back in the office who will look at a variety of elements related to the plan in this update, working alongside staff that we did, same as we've been doing in the Goose, Goose Creek project. So I want to talk a little bit about our project approach. So we have a four-phased project approach here. So we're going to be looking at the existing conditions. We will be updating all of the base maps in here, collecting information to update the appendices. We're going to go ahead and get started with community engagement through the website as well as our public platform. And we are here on this trip doing focus group interviews with BOMA and the Plan Commission members. We will be doing an evaluation of the plan, re-looking at the vision and principles, making sure they're still current from what was in there, looking and seeing if anything needs to be revised. We will be undertaking the housing trends and gaps analysis, and then continuing on with our joint sessions with you all. We will then move into the revision stage where we'll make any policy changes based on the outcomes of that analysis update and the data that we are looking at. We will update all of the photos and images that we have in the report. We will have a couple of topical meetings in here. We're still discussing how that might play out, whether that's going to be geographically based or subject matter-based. We will look at each of the design concepts and update those, see if we need any more to add any more design concepts to the stable here. And then we will evaluate those impacts. And then finally, we'll move into the action stage where we'll draft the plan, go through a public review, have a community meeting, and have that 30-day review process before it moves into adoption. So it will be adopted both by BOMA as well as the Plan Commission, so it becomes the policy of the community. So that is the process that we're going through. And then we will have community engagement throughout this entire process, knowing how important it is to have the community engaged. So our schedule, this is our tentative schedule that we're starting here in December. We hope to be completed by January of 2024. As you see, we have quite a bit of meetings. The blue dots that you see in each of the phases represent the different milestones that we will have in terms of deliverables. The orange dots represent the joint meetings that we have. We will have six of those. The purple dots represent the online engagement. that we have. We will have six of those. The purple dots represent the online engagement opportunities. We will have two in-person public meetings, which are represented by the green dots, so we're roughly looking at March and potentially September at this point in time. We are looking at around that same period of time, looking at potentially hosting our topical meetings at that point in time, and then having several working sessions with staff. Again, staff is a key, critical part in putting this plan together, and we will be working with them hand-in-hand as we have been throughout this entire process. Now, what I want to do is turn it over to Deborah, who I'll have her talk a little bit about the housing strategy, and then have Dan talk a little bit about floodplain and open space, and we will do that quickly, because we really want to hear from you about some of your issues that you think we need to address. So Deborah?
Thank you, Cynthia. So, for the housing strategy that our team will be developing and I'll be leading, we're looking at tying together the vision and Envision Franklin with some of the housing patterns and demands that, that are emerging and looking towards the future for that. So Envision Franklin, Envision's inviting neighborhoods with a memorable character and a balanced mix of dwellings. And this is just a quick snapshot of certain housing development patterns, and so, again, we're inviting BOMA and the Plan Commission to really look at what are the demands, what are the needs that are coming to Franklin, and how can the character of the community be best preserved and enhanced while also accommodating these needs. Next slide, please. So, this is where it comes to crafting a housing strategy that's rooted in that vision, and looking at what Envision Franklin considers and wants to see, whether it's vibrant neighborhoods or range of housing options, both for rent and for sale, and looking at key elements for how to accomplish this vision. And so this housing strategy that we'll be developing will be leading this vision and bringing the data and housing demand patterns as part of that. Next slide, please. And so some of that is looking at how to grow and diversify housing choices. That may include things like senior-friendly housing stock, whether there's room in the market for first-time homebuyers, looking at opportunities to bring people who work in Franklin to also live here, as well as lowering cost burden for renters. And so, again, asking for your input and feedback on what are the issues that you see. These are a few of the ones that we've identified in our preliminary research, but looking at, has we developed that further, taking your insights into consideration as well.
Thank you, Deborah. I want to spend a little bit, just a few minutes talking about a few items that we'd like to hear from you as we go through this process. The first one is the floodplain extents, and what we're showing here on the screen is just a past project that we worked on to kind of show you our experience in dealing with floodplains from the 2-year to 500-year. And if you go to the next slide, Cynthia, we mapped and really studied floodplains and develop, and determined how those could potentially impact development, and that's something that, you know, we think could be looked at in terms of the conservation subdivision. We've heard a lot about that in terms of an update to Envision Franklin. So those are, that's a really key item that, as we go through this process, that we want to hear from you, get your feedback on floodplain extents and how that impacts your community. And then there's two other items, oh, I'm sorry, and this is just a quick image that kind of shows this particular project of what it looked like in a dry, dry stage versus the flooded, the floodplain on the next slide. There it goes. So a lot of, I know there's a lot of details in floodplain and development, and we'll be happy to talk to you about those. This is just showing you some of our past experience in studying that information. The last two items I want to talk to you today about are open space and connectivity. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, Cynthia. Envision Franklin, as it notes here, it wants to expand connections to downtown and to historic parks from the surrounding residential areas. We've, we've dealt with a lot of open space planning before, both at a regional scale or a community scale, which is kind of what this image is representing on one of our past projects, but also at a very site-specific scale, and I chose these two particular images to show you, and that we'd, we'd really like to get your input on how open space, and even the floodplain, may, may go hand-in-hand. These two projects both flood frequently, and they're two projects that we worked on. Both are used open spaces rather than development in these particular communities. And then the last item I want to talk about, just very, very briefly, is how we can continue to enhance walkability and connectivity as we look to make updates to the, to, to the plan, and that's through probably the design concepts, but those are the three items, the floodplain, open space, and connectivity, that we'd love to get your input on through the process.
So that was a very quick and brief overview of our process. Given the short nature here, we want to be able to open it up for you, and want to hear what you want us to address during this update. You know, what are your concerns? What are, what do you want to see? You know, we, again, albeit brief there, we threw a lot of images, we threw a lot of, of concepts out there very quickly to you, but are interested in hearing what your thoughts are.
Okay.
On page 10, how did you come up with the forecast predicting an unmet need of 4,000 housing units in Franklin over the next 20 years? I think that number is very low. Tell me how you calculated that.
That was based on partly what we saw in the Franklin development plan online, as well as from the Tischler-Beis housing study that was focused on Goose Creek, but also had additional information about the larger Franklin area, and so those figures were drawn from those sources. It's certainly possible that, you know, it's a rapidly growing area, and there may be additional updates to include as part of what we develop, but that's the baseline that we're working with.
And we're talking about the next 20 years, and you're saying 4,000 is the number?
That's, that's the forecast that we had, but again, it may certainly need to be updated.
And it's unmet needs, right?
Right, right.
That's way off.
It's an important starting point, but not an ending point, so.
Yeah. That's a long thing. I'm not going into all of that.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'll keep it really short, but I was really, on page 12, I was really happy to see, we talked, we focused so much on the growth, the people that are coming in, but one of the things I was really happy to see, there are like three I can think of right off the top of my head, historically black neighborhoods in this, in this city, and when you say you were looking at diversifying housing choices and lowering costs for renters and increasing housing opportunities for low commuters, for commuters and to live in Franklin, but I think this may be one of our last chances to really take a look at and maybe preserving that and to do that, and so I will really be talking about that when we do the interview and all of that, our chance to maybe take a look at doing some things for that, because back probably in the 80s, when I first got in the rental business, I was very new at that, and I missed, missed some opportunities, and I really want to discuss with you guys that. I'll hush there.
Sorry, just a quick clarification that your specific interest is in how to preserve the historically black neighborhoods that you described.
Well, yeah, and so, and in preserving that, it not only keeps them, not to just keep them black, but that, that's where we have our lowest-cost housing right now, and if we can do some things and take a look at it, and that's why I said that, not to keep them, although that would be nice, but, but I'm saying, because the reason it's saying is keeping our community diverse, because if we look at it, let's just be honest, the influx of residents for Franklin right now are predominantly white, okay? They're other than black, okay? And so I'm focusing on that, because right now, the homes in those neighborhoods are the lowest-cost homes right now. They're being replaced, though, they're, they're taking out a $100,000 home and putting a $750,000 home there. So yes, and I'm not gonna apologize for that's where I'm, I'm really focusing, because my properties are in those, and my dad and I are doing the best we can to keep our rents as low as possible, and right now, we're keeping people who are born, raised, and live, there's like three of us left, born, raised, and still live in Franklin there, able to live there. And so, yes, my heart is there, because we're, we're trying to keep, and that's keeping some diversity of housing, housing choices, and renters there. So I'll stop, get off my soapbox, but I'm interested in that, and I'm glad to see that.
Thank you, and I would classify that as an anti-displacement strategy is what we're targeting here.
Oh, that sounds so very cool. Thanks, all right.
Commissioner Harrison?
No, I wasn't talking.
Do you have any comments?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Williamson?
I just wanted to say, too, I have a big interest in, you know, the housing and the price of rent, because we have all these new rental properties, you know, these big things going in. If you look at the price of rent, even if you make a really pretty good job working at all of these places in Little Springs, you're probably not gonna be able to afford to live in Franklin, and so this whole idea of like, hey, it's mixed use, these people that work in these little retail shops we wrap around these, that they can live up, no, 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 they can't. The prices of rent, you can get a mortgage for a half-million-dollar house cheaper than you can rent for in here, and so when you talk about those neighborhoods, I know exactly what that is, and even in those, those rents are driving up.
Yes.
That you can buy them and you can rent them for more, and you can make, it's a good investment, so guess who's buying them?
Exactly.
Investment people are gonna buy them, and so when you talk about having that accessible to people who want to live here, that want to work here and not have that price point, it's a real issue, and
It is.
Just seeing what some of those houses are selling for, it would just make your jaw drop for this amount of square footage that they sell it, even if they don't tear it down, and already you see that creep happening.
It is.
It's displacing people, and where are they gonna go? Not in, not in this county. And so we really have to hold on to that. What are our mechanism or way we can make that happen, I think, would be a huge benefit, and to not allow, you know, this thing where, you know, it's, it's just a real estate transaction, let the markets run the course, because we know what we'll get if we do that.
Okay. Alderman Peterson?
Yeah.
Alderman Hansen?
Alderman Berger?
I'm just curious, interesting comments, but I don't know how we make that happen in a free market. Really is not under our purview to do that. I don't know how that happens, but how do we not make that happen, or how do we control that? I'm not so sure we have any control over that, and I'd be curious how in planning, Envision Franklin, you said something about anti-displacement effort. Well, how do you work with that when the market won't bear it? Somebody sells a house, as Marcia said, like for $100,000, and somebody replaces it with a $700,000 house. How do you, how does the government control that? How does Envision Franklin control that in a free market country? I don't understand that. And, and I'm not saying I disagree that we, we need, need housing, we're gonna need housing, we have issues with affordable housing, absolutely, all day long, we know these problems. I don't think anybody in this room argues with that, that issue, but I don't know how we in this room or Envision Franklin solves that problem. I don't know if there's enough, not even tools in the toolbox, but free market control to do that.
All right. Alderman Brown? Anything?
Because we're short on time, and I would just say, my biggest thing is on the, on the schedule, and I say this with love and respect for my fellow commissioners and board members, that if we try to tack on those, we, this was one of the six meetings that we get to give you feedback on. I'm sorry, but like, I don't know what you're gonna do with what you've just heard from all, I mean, it's very, there's some really good points, but we're rushed, and there's a lot of people to talk, and we want to give feedback, but some of us don't want to because of the timeframe, so please take out at least some of those meetings from our regular agenda and only focus on this, and let us stay on topic, and let us not get philosophical, and let us, let us give you what you want, because if we don't, there's gonna be lots of frustrated people in this community and lots of frustrated people in these seats.
Alderman Potts?
I fully support what Alderman Baggett just said. I, this is, to have the limited amount of time that we have to talk about this and this to be one of your milestones, I, I think is either inappropriate or unacceptable. We've got to have dedicated time for this, so we need to come back and revisit what the plan is right here, adding additional meetings. I like the idea of it just being the sole, sole purpose of discussion. I'd also, Mr. Chair, recommend that we limit the amount of input for each person that does bring things to the table for those meetings, so that all can be heard.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mayor Moore?
Well, I applaud the aldermen who are eager to make sure that there's plenty of time, and I think that just reflects what a great board we have and how they want to be engaged in creating the right plan for Franklin to move forward, so the Baggett philosophy is stamped, let's move it forward.
Okay. So, so from the perspective of input, from, from my perspective, I guess, one of the things I really want, as we go into the, this whole Envision Franklin process, is that we, is we spend an appropriate amount of time in a comparison, comparison of what our initial objectives were with Envision Franklin, and what was it, 2015, we, we prepared and adopted that. Most of us were involved in that process at that time as well. And then look at what, what, what either has changed or what should change going forward. We talk about floodplain extents, I appreciate that, I dabble in floodplains myself, and, and the considerations for what we do to protect the investments of the residents of Franklin, be they residential investments, be they commercial investments, the protection of life and safety, that, that we consider the appropriateness of higher standards. FEMA spends an inordinate amount of time talking about higher standards. We have higher free boards, we want higher houses built higher, if they're built in floodplains. Consider non-regulatory products, and that's a function of FEMA and their mapping process, but they have ways of doing more fancy things with flood maps that provide a lot more information, you know, things like depth of flooding and those kinds of things. You know, is it in a floodplain? Yes. Is it, is it a foot deep at a 100-year flood, or is it five feet deep? You know, those, those are very different scenarios. The appropriate use of open space, you know. And then the consideration of appropriate densities, and I look at every new development that comes in, if it's a subdivision and there's a, you know, they're, they're, we're matching lot sizes on the outside, but we're putting a lot of smaller lots on the inside, and, and I've been, I've been kind of a vocal, sometimes thorn in the developer's side from time to time relative to how small these lots are, but I also want us to come to grips with the fact that if we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a deficit of 4,000 housing units in 20 years, and we don't want to build 20 more six-story apartment complexes to accommodate those housing needs, then we gotta look at how we appropriately increase the density in the, in the interiors of some of these subdivisions, both from the perspective of, of the, the cost to the, to the new homebuyer, of which I, I raised a few of those, they're new homebuyers, and so we want, we want housing to be affordable for, for all potential buyers of homes, residents of homes, workers of the city and the school system, those kinds of things. Those are some of my thoughts about where we go with Envision Franklin. And I think, unless, anybody else has a little final comment to make? I appreciate it very much. There's so much to talk about, and, and there's, this was a relatively little bit of time to do it. One other item, we've got a couple of our aldermen that have asked to place an item on the agenda, item number five tonight, and we want to, we wanted to bring this up tonight, we want to introduce the concept. It's a unique item. Alderman Brown, Alderman Baggett requesting to use the joint conceptual workshop as an opportunity to discuss an idea that, that they've been contemplating and to, and to get some initial feedback, because I also think it, it kind of feeds into Envision Franklin, and that's appropriate from this perspective, so. So with that, I will turn it over to staffer, Alderman?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners and fellow aldermen. We're not gonna talk about any specific project today. We're really talking about the concept and anticipation of an amendment, application in January for an amendment to Envision Franklin. We'll kind of talk through why that timing, but we wanted to bring in here today to share with all of you to get some feedback and some thoughts on, on what's being proposed here. Quite frankly, there's a lot of things that are great about this city that we love. This right here just truly excites me and where it's headed, and so thanks for the opportunity to share. So we talked about the factory district. We are talking about an area that we envision as a vibrant arts and entertainment neighborhood, anchored by the factory, which also anchored by the factory, which also is anchored inside of, by the Studio 10, our professional theater here in Franklin, new restaurants, entertainment, Makers Marks, Makers Market, creative shops. Hopefully some Makers Mark maybe is in there too, I guess. Guess I know where my head is at 6:30. You know, lots of pedestrian activation, lots of connected walkable living, diversity of housing that cultivates and supports this multi-generational community that we want to build here, inviting areas that foster collaboration and creativity and connectivity into our Harlinsdale Park and future development within this district. There's some really great sort of place making opportunities here. And one of the ones is this idea of economic vitality. You know, we really rely a lot on our Main Street. And we're seeing a lot of pressure on our Main Street and our boutique shops on Main Street with the cost of everything going up. And one of the ways that we can really help our city is to expand what is a draw to our, to our area. Creating an arts and entertainment district has the potential to not only welcome different folks, more folks that might want to come to our downtown Main, Main Street into Franklin and have a purpose to come to Franklin. It may also very well work to keep us from losing people to Nashville by having a place to go to see great shows and have a great night out on a date night or so forth. It also builds strong community. You know, we have a great opportunity here to sort of enable our residents to stay here, have great residential options, as well as connected dining entertainment that connects downtown to this factory district. And just imagine this whole sort of area all-inclusive. The other thing is, we do have a great creative culture here in Franklin and not necessarily a very intentional area to, to live that out. I think even as we think about art installations or we think about where our creative folks go, it's very much in pockets and places. This has the ability to create a really intentional place for those creative folks to come, to enjoy, to collaborate, and also ways for us to think about bringing forth that art and creative culture within our community. There's a lot of great things that are in Envision Franklin, and I pulled a couple of them out because I thought they were really relevant to supporting why we would want this kind of a district. You know, I said earlier in my interview with the folks about Envision Franklin, there's some wonderful language hidden in that document that if you really truly read it, it's in there. And these were three of those. That first of all, these transitional areas, and I kind of think about that this way because we're talking about downtown transitioning out through our gateway out into Mack Hatcher, that change in neighborhood form is expected or enhancement of community character is desired. And I think if we do this district right, I think we have a chance to actually exponentially define future character rather than just having the existing character dictate what's going to happen here in this district. So what, what might we envision to bring something new and fresh into Franklin? Infill development should reestablish the pedestrian scale activity along automobile orientated corridors. Well, we've got a new bridge coming across the Harpeth. We've got new sidewalks stretching from downtown. We have a real opportunity here to connect neighborhoods and truly create some walkability, to, to think about fronting buildings on sidewalks and really thinking about our arterial roads and, and how are those pedestrian friendly based on where we want to go versus where they are today. And the final thing here, neighborhoods should have a pedestrian friendly design, making it really pleasurable to be a part of something like that, continue to be the cornerstone and increased, you know, increase, increase that connectivity at every opportunity that we have. So with that, there is a plan to bring forth an amendment. The reason that we're not suggesting doing that during this Envision Franklin update is that you just saw the timeline and it is an extensive timeline. And so we're not going to talk about projects here today. There are some in the pipeline that are coming. And the last thing that we really wanted to have happen here was have individual projects be developed without the context of envisioning what this new area could be for us and how we might think about that in the context of all of it together. I think we just talked about Cool Springs and how all of that was done piece by piece by piece. Imagine had we stepped back. Well, this is one of those opportunities for us to really step back and look at an area and say, what do we want this to be and how do we actually make it great for, for our community? So both the, the middle eight at the factory district and the factory at Franklin are in pipeline, but we can surely expect, I think we all know that industrial area will ultimately be redeveloped. And so there is more to be considered within that area. Finally, corridor character is a critical component and I think we need to address that. How do we activate pedestrian activation, streetscapes, on-street parking, art installations, transit considerations? All of those really need to be thought about as we think about this factory district and the thoughtfulness of doing so by doing an amendment into Envision Franklin and having it be thoughtfully considered. And then finally, just really also alignment of all the Envision Franklin design concepts. There are multiples, I've listed them here in that area, to really step back and take a look and say, what is it that we imagine that area really being and how do we sort of push development towards that? With that, I'll hand it over to my friend here, Alderman Baggett.
Thank you. And I think, I'm glad we're still, well, you can go back to the other slide because Matt's the ones with the words on it, mine's the ones with the pictures on it, but.
Pictures.
So.
What was that, sir?
No, I don't know. Self-deprecating. So I think this really visualizes kind of what we're talking about. And I think we've got a plan, we've got multiple, basically, you know, a hat full of different concepts that kind of border each other in this area. And with that, on, on an arterial road that has some street requirements that don't, aren't as friendly to pedestrian, to a more walkable, I mean, they have sidewalks, but, but I think kind of limits some of the creativity there. And so when we have all these different concepts and with our staff, you know, recommending based on those concepts, there could be hurdles that we, that we, as in, we as a, as a, as a, two, multiple bodies, will have to look at these kind of, you know, these issues. And, and I want us to go to the next slide. And, and here's kind of the spirit of the question that we want feedback on, which is, and this is Main Street, I don't know the year, but you have a very functional street, right? I mean, you've got a street, you've got sidewalks, you've got crosswalks. They're not painted very well, but I can see some there, there's some signage for crosswalks there. You've got, you know, functionally, this, this is, this works, right? I mean, okay, I mean, it passes muster, but then you got below is what we have today. And, and I would argue that there was some, a vast, a great number of individuals in our history that, that took the time to contemplate what could be on Main Street. And they took the time to consider outside of the box thinking at that time because guess what, you know, codes and was delivering and our, and our plans were delivering. And we have worked, we've built on that and our staff and our elected officials have delivered what you see below. And I think what we're really wanting feedback on is if this, these boards want to give staff some feedback on if there is, when they encounter challenges in weaving these different districts together. I think, I think just a vote of, of encouragement to, to think about how to make, achieve some of these goals of, of connectivity, even if it's not in our plan. For instance, there's no benches in, that could be on Liberty Pike. Well, because of the nature of its classification, and that's one small example. Now, would we, maybe, I'm not saying that anyone would draw a hard line there, but the point is, is that there's some things that we would like for your feedback. If this is the kind of vision you want to see, a distinct factory district with a walkable, a pedestrian friendly that connects Harlinsdale, the factory and Jameson Station, and to, to actually be something cohesive, we would appreciate your feedback on if that's something you'd like to see.
Well, I speak out first and say, I think it's a great idea and it should be pursued. It's long, especially the factory itself is an example of a unique property in the city of Franklin, needs special attention and help it grow to draw more people in. Creative collective would be a great opportunity to do something like that. So I would support it.
So I'd like to say to you, I think it's a great idea, but I also want to give you the, the cons of what we'll see and what, after the first neighborhood is built, what we'll, what we're counter. Neighborhoods and, because you talk about walkability, but as an outsider that lives on the other side of town that would love to come take advantage of the, of the culture and the arts and all that are going on there, is because, of course, you know you're going to have parking. But the first thing that a neighborhood is going to want, that's going to say, ah, connectivity, because you don't want to have where we're going to have the traffic, right? Because you don't want to have where you have these little alcoves and there's one way in and one way out. Because then you have another Columbia Avenue on your hand, right? So the connectivity, because people are going to have to know going straight in and out there. We're going to have to connect these. You're going to have multiple ways in and out, parking, of course. But it's a great idea. I mean, the thought of it, I was kind of like, hey, great. But, but you know, you got to make sure that, that staff, and when we do that, we're not up here every day, somebody come and say, yeah, but we don't want to connect these streets.
No, no. And I think it's important for you to know that we're talking vision and there are a lot of things, we're not talking about throwing the book out the window.
I'm just saying.
You know what I mean? So I think the book is great, but I think there, because of the nature of these parcels and how the different Envision Franklin overlays are all right there together, but I, I hear you.
But you just kept saying walkability. I know, because you're talking now about the neighborhood itself, but with people coming from outside to enjoy, you know, walkability is great and all, but just know that there's some other pressure that'll go into it. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Staff? Did y'all have?
Yeah, I think, I'll, I'll kick it off a little bit. We wanted to give some staff perspective. And first of all, I think this is great to have this discussion. This is kind of a vision of what we hope the joint conceptual workshop can be. And it's really great to see something coming from our elected leaders about some things to think about. So that's great. And this is especially effective when we look at an area like this and setting a broad vision for it, especially because there's a whole variety of land uses around it. Some of it's legacy, some of it's evolving. So there's real value in that and a real opportunity in that. And the idea of maybe not just an arts and entertainment district around the factory, but there might be an application for that concept other places in the city of Franklin. You could see that easily in Cool Springs, maybe in Berry Farms, some of those areas, some of the redevelopment we see might be influenced by that too. So it might just not be a factory district, it might be the concept of an arts and entertainment district. So I think there's value to thinking of that and maybe that takes more of a shape specifically in, in, in Envision Franklin as that evolves. And I understand there are projects in the pipeline and that's, that's, I think, our one word of caution is a little bit to say, this is great, let's move forward with this kind of vision, but let's also make sure we're respecting a process related to things that are in the pipeline, that are developing, that this doesn't in any way substitute for questions that maybe that applicant needs to ask, whether it's around building height or some other elements, that those don't get sort of lost in this broader vision, that there, there are some specific issues that have some, some real application and that we ought to make sure we see those. Especially around this area, the other consideration is, it is in the historic district, so you got historic zoning overlay considerations and compatibility with the historic character in this area. So that, that, that will play a role in whatever we do as we move along. But it's, it's encouraging, it's interesting. There are elements as we look at, especially related to specific ones, we, specific development that's in the pipeline that we want to make sure we're, we're being mindful of as we move along. And I, I know Kelly has some additional, more specific, probably more informed comments than I have.
Just to add on to what you've said, Eric, this is a unique proposal and an exciting one. It's talking about the long-term vision for how an area should grow and develop and what the physical environment should be like. It does, it does make a lot of sense to put that in the overall Envision Franklin update that's, that's really engaging the community in a very thoughtful way. This particular area is the last rural corridor into downtown Franklin and is in the Franklin Road Historic District, and it's very impactful to the overall character of the city. And there's two major components that work together to create an exceptional place. That's the land uses and that's the design of the development. And that includes the building form, the height, the scale, the massing, the setbacks, the architecture, the skin of the buildings. All of those contribute to what that place is, how people use that place, how people enjoy that place and what it feels like to be there. There may be some additional uses that might provide some synergy to the factory area. It is a unique mix of uses within this area, but community outreach will be very important as part of that process to engage the community on, on additional uses as well. Context and compatibility rise to the top when we engage the community every time, particularly in the historic districts. Last month, the DRC did review a particular development proposal for one of the properties in this area. And that proposal exceeds the height and scale for Envision Franklin and also for the, the historic district design guidelines. The question that staff has is how do these specific development-led requests work with the overall vision for the future of the area? And that we need to carefully look at how we approach that to make sure that private developer-driven requests are submitted separately and evaluated on a case-by-case basis when those involve changes to a scale and intense, intensity. Thank you.
Right, thanks. Okay. Any other quick comments? We're about, is Alderman.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would agree with the case-by-case basis because honestly, that's what I would think of Franklin, a factory district would do. It takes it out of that, you know, case-by-case, it creates a district. And my concerns would be that we, the area around the factory is already a great connectivity to me. It's, it's wonderful. You can just walk, especially with our new sidewalks on Franklin Road. It's, we have really created this connectivity. And so, and then we have a huge park across the street and the new, the new renovations at the factory will allow for so much increased parking, parking garage addition over there. The factory district to me is a totally appropriate district in that area and something very unique and I think something we've long, long missed in our city. We go to other cities and they have these special districts. And it allows for better creativity, I think, to think, work and create outside the box that we have, our ordinances, our rules and our regulations in our Envision Franklin. We have this nicely neat box. And this, to me, lends itself outside a box. If we really, truly want something unique and creative and with the creative community, we have to be, we have to allow for creativity. So my concerns would be there that, that we specifically create something like this, the factory district, so you have that, you have the freedom, you know, outside the boxes that we have created, which are necessary. I'm not, I'm not saying that they're bad, but this allows it to be a more creative package, if, so to speak. And then the only, I don't, I don't see this as being a rural corridor at all because there's nothing rural about that area. I mean, we have, across the street, you have seven acres, it's open land, but you have houses and you have everything else and you have a whole urban area of downtown. We do have, of course, the large park across the street. And if you go north to Mack Hatcher, you have some open spaces and stuff. So, but we're not out in the country. But I think we need to really think about accommodating this and, and, and I'm just really very pleased that the two aldermen over here have brought this forward. It's very forward-thinking, very unique, and we have many examples throughout the country of cities who've done this and done it very well. And I think that we can learn from those and then create the, the special district. Thanks.
I know we're out of time.
Yeah, you got five seconds.
Just quick. Okay. Thank you for the creative minds who've thought about this. It doesn't happen often. We're always piecemealing things and putting things together just a little at a time, but to take this core theme and to come up with the creative ideas that you all have, I really, I'd like it and I think it's something we should move forward with. And that's all. We're running out of time.
Specifics are up to, to you all, but I think we just wanted to cast a vision so as you see things, as you think about things, take that into consideration, but certainly not get into specifics, but just thank you for listening.
No, and I think, if I can take the last five seconds. I think from the perspective, there's two things that make this important. One is it's the factory. You know, if it weren't for the factory, this, this, this wouldn't be, you know. And the other thing is proximity to downtown and, and the new bridges, the new sidewalks, the ability to transport back and forth. You know, both of those components make it important that we give special consideration to this area. And I appreciate you bringing that before this board. So with that, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.